Okay, it is 10 o'clock. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And we will start with a salute to the flag. Bill Thomas, if you could lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas, we will now do roll call. Madam Clerk?
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clerk. Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andreola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasey, here County Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will now move into item three, Mr. Manager.
Item three is Commissioners and County Managers announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you very much. I have Vice Chair Herman signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items. The first one is, let me give you a little history. About eight years ago, a couple that owns a ranch up in the north country came into my office and requested that I see about getting their, what they call the dugway. It's a shortcut road that goes from one area to another and one road to another. It's like a cutoff, you know? And so I started at that time to try and get funding and get some roadwork done for them. So, nothing has happened. Nobody has confined money for getting it done. So, I did a little legwork. And we got in $2,900,000 last year from Pilt. And Pilt money should be used for things like road improvements, I believe. I think I remember reading about it. So, I asked the folks up there to get me an estimate for what it would cost to repair and maintain the road before winter going up in the Bay area and also repair the dugway. And the bid came in at right around $24,000, which is a lot less than $2,900,000. So, I'm thinking maybe I could use my discretionary funds since we can't seem to get it any other way for that purpose. So, I wanted to let you be aware of that. If we can't use our Pilt money for that, well, we can sure do $24,000. So, the other item is we have two gentlemen called me desperately wondering what we were doing, like we were losing our minds or something, because there's a new development that's going in on Patrician Road. And so, that's between Lemon Valley or close to Golden Valley, goes over the hill. And so, they, in putting this development together, they want to cut off their only access to their property. So, I'd sure like to make sure that we don't allow something like that to happen. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Andreola?
I just wanted to recognize the Washoe County Emergency Management Team under the leadership of Kelly Etchevera and the County Manager for activating the REOC with standing up with the regional partners in preparation for the situation that we're all aware of or probably heard about in terms of Burning Man and the weather. And the communication from the County Manager, I'd like to thank him for really being forward and ensuring that all of the attendees had the communication of shelter in place and being prepared and working with Burning Man and, again, all the regional partners to ensure if something did need to happen, that it would be proactively prepared. And they were. So, I just wanted to recognize everyone's efforts. And really, thankfully, none of that had to be executed, although there's all these interesting stories. And I'm sure people have seen some of the popularity even with Chris Rock putting Burning Man on the map. So, I'm glad that, you know, we really didn't have what could have been a pretty significant response in a possible disaster. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say congratulations to the organizers of the world's largest free hot air ballooning event. So, we couldn't have asked for more incredible weather this year. And it was so green from all the recent rains. It was just a beautiful weekend. And this personally is my favorite event of the year, not to knock any of the other events, but I really, really like this event for a few reasons. Number one, because it's free. Number two, because it's so visually beautiful. And also, number three, because I believe it's a really incredible touch point that the county has with the public to remind them how incredible our regional parks are. And I think that exposing our little ones to parks as early as we can is incredibly important, not only to physical well-being, but also to mental well-being. And on that note, on August 30th and September 1st, I was happy to sponsor a field trip for 148 Sun Valley students in the 4th and 5th grade. And I've got two more trips scheduled for 167 more. And we purposefully picked Sun Valley Regional Park. If you haven't been up there, it's incredible. The trails are beautiful, the facilities. The teacher was even impressed that there's actually toilet paper in the bathroom. The rock formations are so fun. And as I was driving up every single day to visit the kids, you can hear them giggling with the windows rolled up. And to me, there's nothing better than getting our young people, especially in the aftermath of COVID-19, outside, doing STEM education, interacting with their peers, getting that sunshine. And it's just been truly, I don't know, just really fulfilling. And so, thanks to the Commission Support Team and to our wonderful partners at Sierra Nevada Journeys for making that happen. And I welcome anybody who wants to come check out Sun Valley Regional Park. It's incredible. There's a lot of critters out there to check out, too. Lots of coyote, chicken, stories, and all sorts of stuff. So, it was neat to see them making the connections between what is becoming more urban community in a very rural setting. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia, you forgot to say that Rancho is also in your district. So, yes, that's great. Any other Commissioners have Commissioner comments? I'm not seeing any. So, I also just want to commend the staff on both our response to Burning Man, even though it's not in our county. Thank you, Commissioner Andreola, for bringing that up. We have such great leadership at our emergency management group, as well as all of our regional partners who really were engaged that whole weekend and made Washoe County look great. So, thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for making sure that we were communicated to. And I also had an opportunity to go to the balloon races on Saturday. I feel like that was the biggest crowd I have ever seen. I don't know if that is true, but it felt like, whoa, okay, this is very exciting. People are really coming out and doing great things in our community. We had a very productive Community Homeless Advisory Board meeting yesterday. And our staff have done, I just want to commend our staff, they have housed in the last six months over 600 people into permanent housing and just doing incredible work with the wraparound services at the CARES campus. And so, we plan to meet more often for the C-HAB to make sure that the community is hearing all the great things that we are doing for our most vulnerable people in our region. And I was able to take a jail tour recently. I try to do those quarterly. And I really just commend the staff for, I speak to all the inmates, or as many inmates as I can when I take the tour. And I do commend the sheriff and their team because the inmates do really connect with our staff. And they are doing everything that they can to support them and treat them as if, you know, they are our community members and no different, just because they're inmates, because we want that path for their next step. So, it was a great tour. I hope that the rest of the Board will go out there and take a tour as well with your time. So, with that, if there's no other Commissioner comments, not seeing any, we will now go to item four, Mr. Manager.
Well, before we do that, Madam Chair, can the Manager have a couple of comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Manager, please, what are your comments?
Appreciate that. I just wanted to point out that we do have, for Boards and Commissions, this is the first meeting of the month.
Yes.
So, it's our new custom to announce any new openings. On the Board of Equalization, two regular members and one alternate member, we have openings. Term begins January of next year, 2024. The application deadline ends on October 1st. The second is the Board of Adjustment, which is seeking applicants for District 3. It's a partial term ending June 30th, 2025. And that application deadline is September 29th. So, those are my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm sorry for almost skipping you.
It's all right.
All right. We will now move to item four.
Item four is a presentation by Mr. Bill Thomas, Executive Director, and Dale Keller, Director of Engineering and Regional Transportation, with the Regional Transportation Commission, or RTC, on FY '23 RTC Annual Report, including projects recently completed, under construction, and in design.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Hill and Commissioners. For the record, Bill Thomas, Executive Director, RTC Washoe. I think Eric did a real good job of explaining everything I'm going to talk about, but let me just touch on it real quickly. What I'm here asking you for this morning, first is your time, which I appreciate. And hopefully, this will be a reoccurring event where I come here annually to bring the Board, particularly the Board members who aren't part of the RTC Commission, up to speed on what we've been doing at RTC. So, this morning, what I have for you is a video that talks about the projects that we have completed in this past year. And then, I'm going to run through a couple of slides where I talk about things that are in motion or projects that are underway. And then, lastly, talk about a couple items that are important to our world at RTC. And certainly am here to listen to any comments or questions you might have. Not asking you to take any action or make any decisions, just information for your benefit. So, if I can, I'll start with the video. Thank you. Now, I'll move into the PowerPoint. So, you saw this slide briefly towards the end of the video, and I wanted to show this because these are the projects that are actually in construction. I'm going to have two slides here. One is Reno-based and the other is Sparks-based. So, blend it in, those are unincorporated projects. So, you can see here some pretty significant projects that are underway. Probably the biggest one in terms of, the two biggest ones in terms of scale and impact are Audi Wells multimodal project and the Sky Vista Parkway widening. The Sky Vista Parkway project is getting close to being completed. And I'm sure for people who live in the north valleys, that will be a welcome thing happening. Anticipating in the next couple of months, we'll be done with that project, which will be impactful to people in the north valleys. In addition, Audi Wells has been a long-awaited multimodal project that will really change, I think physically and from the standpoint of traffic and bicycles and pedestrians, it'll significantly improve the Audi Wells corridor. So, that's another big project. But I just want to make sure the Board understands that there's more than those two big ones. There's a lot of smaller projects that we are involved in. These particular projects are ones that are a little more Sparks-based. To share on the projects that are going on, Pyramid Improvement Phase 1 is, of course, being done by NDOT and one that's very impactful in the near terms of construction, but also, I think, from a capacity standpoint, once that project's finished. We were very much involved with NDOT in securing the funding and moving that project forward. As far as projects and design, this is the list of the projects that we're working on. Generally speaking, the way we work is it's about a three-year turnaround from the inception of a project till actually construction starts. Many of these projects are more complex than others, but a couple that I might point out that jump out of this is the bridges. So, we've really been focused in great part by federal direction and federal funding to look at some of our bridges. Arlington Bridges is the one that's probably closest to moving into construction, but we're also working on Sierra Street and, in addition, Keystone, which is going to be a very significant bridge that's actually in a state of disrepair. It's not unsafe, but it does need some attention. And that's going to be a big project for our community as we move that forward. Again, like in the other slides, these are Sparks-based projects. And I would say, particularly from the standpoint of traffic in Spanish Springs, which is always an issue, we are designing the Sparks Boulevard capacity improvement. So, once Pyramid Highway Project is complete, our plan would then be to move over to Sparks and add some capacity on that road. So, we'll be out in the Spanish Springs area probably for many years, making improvements, but support for the community to know that these projects, of course, can't happen all at once. A lot of our challenges are getting these projects done, but doing it in a way that we minimize disruption. But Sparks Boulevard will be a big project for people living in the Spanish Springs, North Sparks area. Switching over to the public transportation world. So, we, as the slide showed, we became 100% alternative fuel last year, way ahead of schedule. But we're also now moving to a new technology in terms of hydrogen fuel cell buses. So, these buses, it's much like an internal combustion, which is you fill the tank instead of having batteries that are charged. What we found with our mini electric buses is the biggest challenge is, like all batteries, they drain as soon as you start using them. And so, mid-course, often, we have to charge the buses. So, it's a little bit of downtime as they're sitting, unloading, loading people that they have to recharge. The beauty of the hydrogen fuel cell is their zero emission, which meets the objective of the electric vehicles. But perhaps more importantly is they can fulfill their 300-plus mile needs of the system without having to recharge or do anything. So, that's what we're really excited about. We have two buses on order, which will come in spring of '24, as you can see here, and when six additional, so we have a total of eight. It is an industry-leading technology. It's one that we're learning a lot about, but it's one that I'm very proud of, and I think our Board is, too, that we're moving in that direction. And then, excuse me, the last thing I want to touch on was this, which is, again, part of the presentation. This is a comparison of what's going on in terms of gallons of fuel that's purchased. And you can see, both from the bars as well as the dotted line, which is the trend, that for each person, which, of course, we're growing as a community, individuals are consuming less gas, which, I guess, in the abstract is a good thing. But when you get to the second chart, you'll see what's actually going on in terms of people driving. So, people are buying less gas, but they're actually driving more. Now, what does that mean? Well, in our world, fuel tax is what really funds all the projects you saw earlier and the ones on that list. And so, we're going to have to deal with, probably in the near term, next three to five years, a changing funding structure as people drive electric vehicles, hydrogen fuel cell vehicles, hybrid vehicles, more efficient vehicles, period. There's going to be less gas consumption. So, it's an issue that has been much discussed. I can't bring to you a solution. We are certainly working at RTC for the interest of our county to make sure that we're considering how is that going to be addressed as we move forward. Because regardless of the source of fuel you use, you still use the road. And I think all of us like a road that is not full of potholes or falling apart or has major capacity issues. So, just kind of a heads up on that. Last thing on, just to give you an indicator of this being a real world, we've closed out our accounting for the past fiscal year, and we're down about 1% on sales tax, which we use for the public transportation side. We're down about 3.3% for the fuel tax. So, what that means compared to budget is that we're getting less revenue than we had forecasted, even though we did a conservative forecast. So, the trend is real. These graphs aren't abstract. It's just part of our world and something we're going to have to deal with. So, I will, with that, close my presentation and maybe draw your attention, as I do that, to two items that were presented to you. One of them is an RTC update of all the projects we're doing. There's about 70 of them. Feel free, please, to look through those. It'll tell you where they are in the various stages of development. And I'm more than happy individually, if you want to call me, to find out what's going on any particular project. And then, lastly, I also included, for your benefit, a federal priorities list of projects that we had, the RTC Board has given us direction to make our priority in terms of how we approach federal funding. So, with that, I will close my presentation and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Looking to my Board to see if folks have any questions. Commissioner Andreola?
Actually, it's a comment. Thanks for providing all that detailed information. I think it's really helpful to have that timeline. And I also really want to thank RTC and the partnership. I mentioned this in a previous meeting, but one of my constituents, who's a retired Coast Guard, moved to an area that he was unable to get to the bus stop. And through the partnership of this wonderful staff of here in Washoe County and RTC, he's able to now go to treatment for life-saving dialysis. So, I really want to thank the approach of looking at the entire community, but certainly Spanish Springs is near and dear to my heart. So, I really appreciate that. I also appreciate your efforts in terms of securing funding for Pyramid. We're all hopeful, as we drive that every day, that it gets done sooner than later. But I do want to commend RTC in terms of being really proactive as you do approach projects and keeping the community informed and having timelines. And certainly, I'd like to even follow up, I'll certainly follow up the chair of the cab, but I think having you come out and share with the constituents in Spanish Springs, being that you're going to be our lovely neighbors for a while, would be helpful to brief everyone and have that opportunity for their questions and knowledge. So, thank you.
Great idea to get Director Thomas to the cabs. Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. Any other Board members? It would be great if you could just go over the FlexRide expansions, because I think that folks don't realize what we're investing in for the future for FlexRide. And maybe talk about that program a bit more and why we're investing in it. That would be helpful.
So, starting with the traditional buses, the big blue buses that everybody's familiar with, the 60-person vehicles, those are obviously very expensive to run and maintain. And so, a particular route runs probably somewhere close to $700,000 a year just for two buses. So, you can imagine that with that kind of cost, we're very aware of how we use that resource. And what we've learned over time, and you saw on the slides, is that what really works the best in our community is frequent service with the larger buses in the urban corridor. We've seen that the Rapid Line grew significantly to the point now where it's close to a third of all the people riding the buses are in the urban core. And we've moved to having 10-minute trips on those is really a way to get people to ride the bus. However, it still leaves areas of the community that need public transportation, and that's where the FlexRide comes in. So, just to explain what the FlexRide is, that's a much smaller vehicle, probably a 10, 12-person vehicle, that we use in a geographic area. So, we go out and we define based on what we think ridership is, a geographic area, that mode of transportation's available to people, and it's curb-to-curb. What that means is we'll come to wherever you are, and then we'll take you to a place within that geographic area. What we've really found is it's a great way to serve areas like Spanish Springs, some of the more suburban areas, that it's very hard to run a bus. There's just not enough people getting on and off that big bus. Whereas, the FlexRide now becomes a tool to find out what the ridership needs are for public transportation in geographic area and then build on that. So, what we do, we're looking at expanding the FlexRide over the next few years to different areas of our community where we can test public ridership. It's been very successful in the first one we did, which is in Spanish Springs. Next phase we're going to do is actually southeast and southwest Reno area, part of the county, and see how that works. But the long-term goal would be to use the FlexRide to cover basically our whole county as best we can. It's a much more efficient and less costly way of providing public transportation. But I not want to belabor this point, but I do want to share with the Commissioners who aren't part of our Board that the Board's strategy is to provide public transportation to everyone, not just a certain area, but it means different tools. So, for example, in some cases, particularly people who are in the outlying areas, it may be a subsidized taxi or a subsidized Uber ride because we can't make it work to provide a true public transit vehicle. But the goal of the Board is to cover everybody differentially. So, I think we've been very successful. We've been seeing some real significant increases, particularly with seniors, and using the taxi bucks and the taxis to be able to get around. So, it is a goal that we have as the RTC's Board and the RTC staff to make sure everybody who needs public transportation can have access to it in a way that works for them and for us.
Great. Thank you so much. And I know we're doing a lot of outreach on our new transit app that people can use and really creating awareness for public transit more than we ever have before. So, I know I've already seen a lot of that promotion and heard it on the radio. So, hopefully, folks are becoming more aware of all these options to get them around our community. Any other Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your leadership. Being part of the RTC Board has been incredible. It's an incredible learning opportunity because you see how many projects are up in the air at the same time, the financing, the prioritization, the assessments, the community engagement, all of the things. It's really a complex organization. So, I commend you on your leadership. I also really love, just from the very beginning, your focus on accessibility for our seniors, for our community members who face physical disabilities, visual impairments, our students, college students. There's so many touchpoints with those different types of populations to get them from point A to point B. I really like the slide and the tension you drew to the hydrogen fuel cell technology versus the EV. And my question is about how we're looking And my question is about how we're looking for our hydrogen-fueling infrastructure moving forward and what the game plan is for the EVs. I know I could talk to you about this offline, but I figured since you pulled it up on the slide, I'd ask about it here today.
That is probably, thank you for the question. The hydrogen fuel cell really is kind of the newest trend, and so a big question with that is, who's going to make the hydrogen and how's it going to get here? Right now, where we're on a course is to have it basically brought into our community, because the closest source we have is in Northern California for the hydrogen. Ultimately, there's conversations, which I think are being led by the state and even at the national level, to create hydrogen fuel hubs throughout the country. And Southern Nevada, I didn't mention this, but Southern Nevada has, actually has the first Nevada hydrogen fuel cell bus that they just started, I think, last week or two weeks ago. So it's a burgeoning industry, but one that has a lot of questions. It's theoretically possible that it could be generated here in our community, but I think time is going to tell whether we can, we can do this in a way that's to scale that allows us to continue to grow. Ultimately, you know, if you think of this as kind of a leading-edge thing, it might be the precursor to individuals having hydrogen fuel cell cars and being able to get the resource, which is much the problem as we know with electricity. People who want to get electric vehicles, but there's challenges to being able to find a place to charge it. That's kind of the problem initially with hydrogen fuel cell, is there are private vehicles you can get that run on hydrogen, but it's a real challenge to find a place to get your fuel. So all of these are kind of leading-edge things that we're going to have to work through, but with the leadership of our board and I think what our community really needs and desires in terms of clean air is a great step for us and hopefully one that'll be rewarding.
Thank you very much. We have Commissioner Clark signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Thomas. I've got some concerns with some areas, Cold Springs, North Valleys. I'm working with seniors there, and they're very interested in the transportation aspect of what RTC can offer them. And I have, on a regular basis, weekly basis, lunches at different senior centers. It's possible to get someone for yourself or someone from your staff to come and explain certain aspects of how they can arrange for Ubers or arrange for taxis and that type of thing, how it could benefit them. We're talking about people living alone and don't have someone that can take them to doctor's appointment after procedures, that type of thing. So I think it'd be nice to explain to the seniors how this could really help them in some of these more isolated areas of the county.
Absolutely. Glad to do that.
I'll have my coordinators reach out to your group, and we'll see if we can get some of these meetings going where you can fully explain this, and they can hear from you rather than me secondhand. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Director Thomas.
Thank you.
And keep up the great work, you and your team. We appreciate it. We are now moving to item five, donations. Commissioner Garcia, can I put you on the spot for donations?
Of course, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Today, I would like to acknowledge and give thanks to the Washoe County Bar Association for, and other local attorneys who recently supported our Washoe County Law Library as listed in item 5A1. And the second donation supports our CASA program, which trains community volunteers to advocate for the best interests of our children who are in the foster care system throughout the court process. So thank you to Kappa Alpha Theta Foundation for item 5A2.
Thank you. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Looking for a second.
All second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion for donations? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say, oh, is there any public comment, Madam?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, I think that passes unanimously, but let's see. Thank you very much. We are now moving to our consent items. Mr. Manager, do you have any items to pull from consent?
I do not.
Okay.
No changes.
Okay. I do want to just point out, item 6F1, our legislative report from the 82nd Legislative Session, and want to commend Ms. Matiavich and all of our departments for working so hard. I know they're always interesting legislative sessions, but this certainly was a good, productive session, but definitely busy. So thank you to the team and really looking forward to what we can do in the interim. But any other commissioners want to pull an item or have questions on an item on consent? I'm not seeing that anyone does, so Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. I am looking for a motion on the consent, then.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now into item seven. Mr. Manager.
Item seven is the Northern Nevada's Public Health District Health Officer, Kevin Dick, will update the board on the recent name change and the Public Health Authority in Washoe County.
Welcome, Mr. Dick.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the commission. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Kevin Dick, District Health Officer for Northern Nevada Public Health, and I'm here today to give you an update on our name change from Washoe County Health District to Northern Nevada Public Health. And I want to thank you, Chair Hill and Commissioner Garcia, as well as the manager and Assistant County Manager, for joining us at our launch event on the 31st. And thank you to all of the commissioners for proclaiming August 31st is Northern Nevada Public Health Day. We had a real fun launch event, lots of media coverage. And I want to go back and about the history and why we did the name change. And it goes back to a concurrent meeting that was held in 2021 with the cities of Reno and Sparks and the Washoe County Commissioners. And there was discussion of the health district, and there was consensus reached that it was advisable for the health district to change our name so that it was clearer to the community that we were not a Washoe County agency, that we were a regional agency and not under the governance of the Board of County Commissioners. And so we began this work with the Estepona Group that worked on several different options for different names for us, and they conducted focus groups and surveys. And in the end, their recommendation was for us to change our name to Northern Nevada Public Health. That recommendation was brought to another concurrent meeting that was held at the end of July of 2022 with those governing bodies. And at that meeting, there was agreement to change the inter-local agreement that establishes the health district to change the name to Northern Nevada Public Health. So it's important to recognize that the health district is a separate governmental subdivision that's formed under NRS 439 through both the cities and the county establishing us as the Regional Public Health Authority. And while we have a new name, we're no longer Washoe County Health District, we're now Northern Nevada Public Health, we have the same mission and programs. And this is a picture of our incredible staff out in front of our building with a new signage. And we also have a new website. It's nnph.org, so it's a little bit easier to get to and to navigate. And we're also alternatively calling ourselves nnph as well. Our email addresses also are changing. We'll have the same name at the front of the email, but it'll be at nnph.org. However, if anybody is using our old addresses, they will be automatically forwarded and arrive in our inboxes, so we shouldn't have any discontinuity in communications. But it's important for our public to recognize the many different services that we provide. One of our most heavily utilized services is our issuance of birth and death certificates, and we issue about 50,000 a year. We also permit air quality, stationary air quality pollution sources, and we have about 1,300 permits. We have a number of different environmental permits. The largest grouping, food establishments that we permit, we have about 4,000 or so of those permits. We, I think the program that we have that our public is most familiar with, particularly after COVID-19, is immunizations. And so we have immunization services required, providing the required childhood vaccinations, but also for immunizations, people that need to get to go to college, or if they have employer requirements, we can, we can help with that as well. We conduct disease investigations of reportable diseases, and we also have sexual health and family planning services. We do have walk-in appointments available every day, but we promote walk-in Wednesdays on Wednesday afternoon. During the pandemic, I was talking about, with the public, about layers of protection that we were working on to protect ourselves from COVID-19. I think it's important for the community to understand that every day, the staff of the health district are working, implementing programs that provide layers of protection for everybody's health in our community every day. And so these programs do that. We also have inspectors in the field that are inspecting a number of different business types. We have restaurants that are inspected, childcare facilities, public pools and spas, hotels and motels, land development inspections, mobile homes and RV parks, gas stations, also all those air pollution sources that we permit. The name change work was a heavy lift for us, and I want to acknowledge Scott Oxerart, who's here today. Caught him while he was getting a drink. But Scott just marked his four-year anniversary with the health district. And during that time, he led our communications and regional communications through COVID-19, and he also did this heavy lift with the rebranding. And, you know, over the last course of the year, following the decision to change the name and the inter-local agreement, Scott has been working with the Abbey Agency on managing the, and implementing our rebranding. So I want to give a big thank you to him. And I also want to touch on our governing body, because that was really the intention of our name change, to ensure that people understand that we're a separate agency, not governed by Washoe County Commissioners. And so we have a district board of health that includes one elected representative that's appointed by each of the governing bodies and an additional appointee from each of those governing bodies. So we have, as our chairman, Councilman Dare from the City of Sparks. As our vice chair, Devin Reese, Vice Mayor from the City of Reno. We're grateful to have Commissioner Garcia as our Washoe County elected representative. And then we have Dr. John Novak, retired pediatric dentist, who's the appointee from the City of Sparks. We have retired fire chief, Michael Brown, retired from Northlake Tahoe Fire as the City of Reno appointee. And we have John Klacking, who has, in addition to his interest in wine, also biogenetic company development. And we, those six members appoint a physician to the board, and so our physician on the board is Dr. Rika Danko, and she is the Chief Medical Officer over at St. Mary's. So thank you for your time. As I mentioned, it's a new name, but we have the same mission, so we're continuing to serve Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. That was a great presentation, and I'm very excited about the rebrand and a wonderful event that you and your team put on. I would like to go over to Commissioner Garcia, because she is our amazing representative on this board and is so responsive to community concerns, and I just really appreciate your hard work, Commissioner Garcia, on this board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the update. And it is a beautiful rebrand. It looks great. I appreciate the emphasis, like I said in the last meeting, on language accessibility. I think it's going to really speak to all of our constituents about what we do and how we do it. I just wanted to draw attention to a different item, just because you're here and because my commissioners should know, the 2022-2025 Community Health Improvement Plan was recently published over the summer. It's an incredible document, 50 pages, very thorough, and I just truly believe that it doesn't matter where you live in the county, it doesn't matter what commissioner you're talking to, we all care about these things in this document. It's mental health, access to healthcare, preventative health, social determinants of health. And to me, it's a waste if the policymakers don't see this incredible work that your team put together. So I just wanted to put on the record for my fellow commissioners, please, I hope you consider making an appointment with Kevin to go over this, to find out what our constituents are facing here locally, what is being prioritized, and how it layers onto the work that we do every single day. So it's just an incredible document.
Well, thank you very much. If I could just add on to that, we, it's hard to package everything that we do at the health district, because there's so many different aspects to it. But we do do a community health assessment to assess the status of health in our community, and from that identify priorities that Commissioner Garcia just addressed that are in the Community Health Improvement Plan. But much of the work that we do is in partnership with other organizations. There are some things that we can do ourselves, but to really try to move the needle on public health, it really requires us moving together and working together as a community. And so the Community Health Improvement Plan that she mentioned is really a document that identifies through partnerships how we're working with other organizations to make change.
That's great. I have not checked that out yet, so thank you for pointing that out. I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to compliment you, Mr. Dick, on the good work that you do there. You've been very helpful with constituents in my area every time I've called on your staff, so it's been, I think, a very good relationship. I am concerned a bit about with the working conditions of your office. I think that your folks are crammed in there. I don't know, are there any plans to expand the office, get you some more square footage there? It's almost like you've got bunk beds in some of those offices.
Well, thank you for coming to visit us, and we're always happy to work with you on constituent concerns. And we are kind of crammed in, in the space that we have as we've grown over the past few years. But one, thank you to the commissioners for the purchase of the West Hills Hospital property, because we do have some funding through the ARPA funds from the state to be able to build a new satellite building for, one, for the TB clinic to operate and move out of the old building at Kermin, but also some additional workspace that we will have there to house some of the staff. And then, two, the, we're working with the county on the Ninth Street Complex Master Plan, and my understanding is how that's evolving is it's likely that we'll have some additional space in Building C that'll be made available for us.
As far as the name change, I mean, the folks I know in the public just think of it as a health department, whatever else you want to put on that is what you want to put on that, but the health department. So no one's going to be offended at your department if the public still refers it as the health department. No one's going to bristle at the name. Is there any penalties if we use the wrong name for a while?
We're working on a new fine structure for that.
The DA's office is going to come after you.
I think the health department is a common term across the nation, and that's fine if people call us the health department. We're still the health district also. That's under Nevada statute. We are a health district, but the name of our health district is Northern Nevada Public Health.
And again, I want to point out, I hope there's no imposters out there, other companies trying to act like they're the health department. So I think you've got a monopoly, and again, name change, you can call yourself whatever you want to call yourself, but the public still thinks of you as the health department. And just want to make sure that nobody will be offended at your staff if that continues on for, I don't know, another generation or two.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're also working to try to get the word out. We've got some advertising that's going to be happening. We're already starting to present at cabs to let people know. We want the community to know if they see somebody walking in with an nnph shirt on, that that's still the health district, it's all right to let them in and have them look around.
Sure. So again, no changes as far as a name change. You're still going to be performing the same services and the same quality of services for the folks. And... for, for the folks. And so for their standpoint, it's still business as usual, just somebody feels more comfortable using another name.
That's, that's it. New name, same mission.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have questions or comments? Thank you for your time, and please applaud your team. We really appreciate all the work they do in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We are now at a point where I am going to look to my vice chair on a block vote.
Sometimes that's kind of tricky. So I, I hope you won't think I forgot to stop counting, but this is, this is the list that I have. It would be agenda item eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Thank you very much. Is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. May I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola, and looking to the clerk for public comment on those items.
I have nobody signed in for any one of those items.
Okay. Any questions on the motion by the board? I'm seeing none. All those in favor of the block vote, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. And I think that passes unanimously. I don't know. Oh, here we go. Thank you. All right. I do want to apologize to the board. I thought we were going to have Sierra Reflections on today's agenda. It has been pulled, item 16. So we need to, I'm going to move item 18 up on the agenda, because we had, at For Incline Village, we had given them a time certain of the item 17 at 1:15. So we'll move item 18 up, and then we will take a break and hear item 17 at 1:15. So, Mr. Manager, item 18.
Item 18 is a public hearing. Adoption and second reading of an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 5. Administration and personnel to add a new section titled Registration and Regulation of the Lobbyist. Establishing, for purposes of the ordinance, definition for lobbyist, communication, policymaker, and family member, requiring lobbyists to register with the county manager, requiring the county manager to maintain and publish a list of registered lobbyists, requiring the county manager to issue identification credentials to all registered lobbyists, requiring lobbyists to wear such identification credentials at certain times and places, and establishing criminal and civil penalties for any person who knowingly violates the provisions of this section.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I know we had a very robust discussion as a board on this in August, but I'm looking to see if board members want to chat about this item before we open it up for public comment. Commissioner Andriola.
I know that there was a lot of, I'll use your term, robust comments and a lot of suggestions. And honestly, since then, I have not stopped, you know, not only thinking about this in terms of the process and really the purpose and the outcome of what we're trying to accomplish with this, but also speaking with staff. And one item that just echoed constantly was the, the recommendation by Commissioner Clark. And I just kept on thinking, when he even made that comment about, why not just have a checkmark on the card, and you can write in who you're representing? I think really speaks to the commitment all of us have for transparency. And I think it will also have the purpose of evolving if necessary, but it won't have this initial impact of maybe staff at this point. And I think, as I mentioned in the previous meeting, you know, I too have had many times I've had to register as a lobbyist. It's a common function that lobbyists all adhere to, and really respectfully to policymakers, share their transparency as well, because they're representing, if you will, an organization or an interest or an item that is beyond just an individual citizen. So I really liked Commissioner Clark's. It's not stopped in terms of having that really great suggestion, and that is where I'm at in terms of position on this particular item.
Okay. So Commissioner Andriola, just to be clear, you're thinking remove the registration requirement at this point is one of your recommendations for the second reading, and stick with the, when you have a public comment card, doing the check and saying who you're represented by?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the clerk, obviously, through the procedure that's already in place, it really won't put in additional impact in terms of registering, but it allows us to look at that possibly down the road. But initially, when the clerk shares the name, can also share the organization that they are a lobbyist for. And that way, that can go on the record, and then full transparency is in place, and I think, I think it decreases the impact of additional costs, and it just, we can move it into the process without a big burden and a big lift to staff, and avoid any additional cost as well at this point. So thank you, Commissioner Clark, for your idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. I have Commissioner Clark to sign in.
Thank you for your support, Commissioner Andriola. You know, it's, when you look at these, these ordinances, I am automatically drawn to the loopholes. I mean, if somebody really wants to represent somebody and they don't want to disclose it, and we've, you know, it'll, it'll come out sooner or later. And that's why I'm always stressing, I want things on the record, so we can see the public record. At a later date, we can go back and see if somebody supported something, and we find out that they were in fact aligned in some other way that wasn't, wasn't more than an arms distance, arms length transaction. We just need to have people disclose who they're, this is an informal county commission meeting with citizens, for the most part. And we, and people should declare if they're, they're here as a lobbyist, and if they're not. Sometimes a, a paid lobbyist for some issue might be here on another issue entirely, and talking about that as a citizen. So how do, where's the, where's the line? How do we define where somebody is a paid lobbyist? I used some examples, and it kind of went over like a lead balloon, but, in the, the past, but they're on public records, so you can go back and read it if you want to. But my point is, you know, let's, let's presume everybody's reasonably honest here, and, and stating their own opinions. It doesn't have to be a paid lobbyist. And, and why, why do we need to know if somebody, you know, isn't a paid lobbyist? Why, why do we have to jump through all these hoops? It just seems like another layer of government. We're having an informal meeting here. People are coming in and talking about what they want to talk about. And do we have to have everybody registered? I think, you know, if you're around here any time at all, you'll, you'll understand who the lobbyists for the developers are, and who, who are, what side they're on. But for the most part, people are giving their own independent comments. So, you know, declare it on your comment card if you're, if you're going to, if you're aligned with somebody, or you're related to somebody. I mean, we watch this happen on a regular basis, seems like over the City of Reno, where people are, haven't been declaring, even on the, on the diocese, who, who they're supporting. And then they, they come back at a later date and tell it. You know, I'm, I'm prepared to always say who I'm supporting, or who I think is, you know, a good reason, and, and I'll disclose it, and I'll be transparent. So we ask everybody to be transparent, and unless there's been some egregious lack of transparency on the citizenry, I think we should let this be somebody that can just self-declare if they're, they're a lobbyist, or they're, have any financial or other arrangements, and why they're supporting something. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been worried about this bill ever since it came up to our decision. I couldn't vote for it in any way. I, I believe that, I don't think that I would want to be the judge of who's telling the truth when they come up there. I, I mean, I don't want any part of this bill, so I would not vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have comments? Commissioner Garcia?
I have a question. Just to backtrack a little bit, the folks that I talked to who work in the industry representing nonprofits and law firms of varying sizes had zero problem with this. So to me, it didn't seem like the people that have boots on the ground would really be impacted by this in terms of a heavy lift or any of that. But I do want to ask Ms. Matiavich, if she, I see her here in chambers. One of my fellow commissioners is talking about the fiscal impact of this. It's not reflected on our staff report. I just wanted to hear from you directly, as somebody that would most likely be taking the lead on this if it were passed, if you could talk to the day-to-day implications of this.
Good morning from the record, Gaiden Smatiavich, Government Affairs Liaison. Through you, Madam Chair, to Commissioner Garcia. You're correct, we did not indicate on the staff report that there would be a fiscal impact, because we didn't expect any new expenditures. You are correct that administering this will require use of existing staff time. In talking with the other local governments that have similar ordinances to the original version, not what you've discussed perhaps as a change today, that there are about 100 registered lobbyists across those different, in Clark County, City of Las Vegas, City of Henderson, and Reno, that each of them have about 100. The initial process, certainly as the, if the ordinance were to be stood up in its current form, there would be some investment of staff time. And then, you know, I would expect a couple of hours a month in reviewing the current list. There's a duty to publish a current list. And also to be reviewing minutes and monitoring meetings to see who is appearing from an administration and, if necessary, enforcement perspective, at the point that there would need to be enforcement of the current ordinance as it's drafted today. That would be done in collaboration with the District Attorney's Office, so there could be some expenditure of staff time in their office as well, if ever there were going to be a prosecution for violation of the ordinance. In speaking with the other jurisdictions, none of them have ever prosecuted. They've indicated that where they found folks that are not aware of it, they, they make them aware of it and bring them into compliance. And so we would see something similar, certainly with the ordinance in its current form, and to a lesser degree with the changes that have been discussed today.
Thank you. I look to DA Edwards for a little bit of direction on this. I, I am open to doing this hybrid approach, Commissioner Clark's recommendation of purely leaving it to a disclosure on a public comment form, and not doing registration today to see if we can move this forward. And I'm just curious, what, what logistically would that look like if we were to do that today?
I, I think what you need to do today is continue this out to another meeting.
Okay.
It's a continuation of the same hearing.
Okay.
And I'm just, as you all have been talking, I've been looking at the ordinance as it was originally drafted for today. I see Section 5.023.2, this is primarily for the record, so if you feel like, don't feel like you need to memorize what I'm saying right now.
I'm reading along.
It's more for, it's more for Ms. Matiavich and me than, than for, for everybody else, but I want to at least put it on the record. 5.023.2 is the section that includes most of the registration requirements. That would be gone, by my understanding of what you're discussing today, if this goes forward in that way. 5.023.4 is the identification badge section that also is tied to registration, so that in my view would also be gone.
Okay.
5.023.3 is the disclosure section, which specifically deals with the comments today, which is when you register for public comments, you have to identify yourself as a lobbyist. That would stay. The definitions section, I believe, would still stay. I don't see anything in there that would need to be changed, but if there were something that needed to be changed, we would do that in conjunction with what you have directed us to do today. So it would be the registration section, .2, .2, the identification badge section, .4 would both be gone. The last thing that I would ask for some clarification on today is, is the criminal penalty going to remain, or is that going to come out? That's .5. I, I'm not sure if that is still going to be part of the package, or if that's going to be removed. So I leave that to you to give us direction on, but that would be .5, and that would be subsection A of that. The civil penalty is subsection B. Or potentially, you might want to get rid of both of them. I don't know. It's, it's kind of up to you. So we would probably need some clarification on that.
Okay. I mean, I'm in favor of keeping Section 5.23.5 intact, but I'm looking to the board for direction on their thoughts. Commissioner Andriola.
You know, if you're going to have an ordinance or any provision that has a framework like this, there should be some type of consequence. So I'm, I'm fine with keeping it intact.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board? Commissioner Clark?
Again, I, I think we're making a, a bigger deal out of this than we should, based on the information we received, that there's been no prosecutions in any other place. So why have a penalty? I mean, at the end of the day, this is designed to keep people from convincing us that their, their idea is better than ours. If, if we can't outthink the people that are trying to convince us, I guess we can't outthink Timeshare salespeople. I mean, I, I don't need somebody to have a penalty because they tried to pull the wool over our eyes. I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense. I think we need to remove that as well. Thank you.
Okay. I, I think, I'm, I'm more aligning with Commissioner Andriola of, there needs to be a consequence in statute, and folks need to take it seriously. This is all about transparency in local government. We don't know everyone that comes to our public meetings, and we're a bigger city. So I think it's important that we keep that provision of the ordinance. And I'm looking to other commissioners, their thoughts. And I'm not seeing, let's see.
May I?
Yes, Commissioner Andriola.
I'd, I'd like to add, again, I can't even express the number of times I've had to register as a lobbyist. It's, to Commissioner Garcia's point, when she evidently had conversations, that, you know, lobbyists are not going to have, in fact, they'll probably welcome the simplicity and seamlessness, and appreciate the transparency, because they have an ethical obligation to do that as well. It's not just the penalty from us, it's also them recognizing their responsibility in representing their particular client. It's a very common procedure that holds to a high standard of transparency on both the lobbyists themselves and also the policymakers. And, and to the point of representing as an individual, lobbyists are probably the most well-equipped to point-blank share that although I'm a registered lobbyist with XYZ, I'm here representing myself, and there's no obligation, and the penalty would not be imposed for such a disclosure. So it might seem complex, but actually, I would almost challenge that this is the most seamless registration that maybe even in the state, I'm not sure, but I, I certainly think it is important to note that lobbyists are very aware of their responsibility and transparency.
Thank you. I see DA Edwards signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a, I would proffer this as a possible middle ground, because I hear competing views on this, but removing the criminal provision, but keeping the civil penalty there would be a middle ground. It would still be a consequence, it's not a, it's not a crime at that point. So do with that as you will, but that's a possible middle ground.
That's .5A, right? Correct?
Yes, A is the, I believe is the criminal, I don't have the ordinance open, but I think A is the criminal provision. Let me just open that real quick. And B is the civil penalty. Yes, A is the criminal provision, and B is the civil penalty.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman. Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman?
I just can't see the reason for this, actually. I mean, when have we had any problems with public speakers? I mean, are we just trying to discourage everybody from coming and speaking to us, or what is this? I mean, to be accused of being a lobbyist when you're not, I mean, I don't think we are the judge of that. And I don't, I think it would interrupt meetings and everything. It just doesn't seem like, you know, we have a free and transparent meeting if we don't allow people to speak. And like I say, people will be afraid to say this and afraid to say that. I want them to tell me the way it is. I don't want to hear, "Well, I don't know if I'm breaking some kind of rule, you know, but I'm not a lobbyist, but I am an American, and I'm a voter, so do I have to do this?" What are we asking for? I just don't understand, I mean, why we need this to begin with. I just see a lot of hard feelings and people resenting us putting rules like this on them. I mean, I'm going to eventually be down there again, and I'm not a lobbyist. I've never been a lobbyist. And I just think that this is just adding a lot of garbage to our meeting, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, that was Ms. Matiavich's comment. No one other, no other municipality or jurisdictions had to go after anybody. If they found somebody was doing this, and they gave them a good talking to, and that was kind of the end of it. But, you know, again, this just seems like just another layer of government trying to manipulate and force people to comply with something. I'm not supporting this thing at all. You know, if we can gut it and make it, you know, like it never happened, I probably would vote for it. But as it is right now, I couldn't support this the way it is. And then we're talking about the prosecution. I think if we really wanted to find out what was taking place, we'd go where the rubber meets the road and have every elected official in the county and the state declaring whether they receive campaign contributions from people. That's where the rubber meets the road.
We do declare that.
On every vote.
Required.
I understand you to file that with the state, but I'm talking about up here on the dais, on every vote. That's what I'm saying. So, you know, let the people talk about what they want to talk about, and judge, make your own decisions. We don't have to. Can somebody really convince us, because they're a paid lobbyist? Ms. Andriola, Commissioner Andriola, talks about what she was a lobbyist. Well, that was her job. She had to do that. That was her job. To try and delve into who is a lobbyist and who isn't, if it's your job, declare that that's your job. We don't have to have anything that, in place that will come after you if you don't make the proper declaration. If you are a paid lobbyist, you should say so. But if you're not, you shouldn't have to say, "I'm not a paid lobbyist." Paid lobbyists should declare themselves. And that's the same spirit of what I said about a check box on the comment card. Just declare it if you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have some public comment. Do we have any other commissioner comments before the public comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to be sure that I clearly understand the direction from your prior discussion, I know you haven't given a final comment, but to add on to what Mr. Edwards said, as he went through the sections, in looking at Section 5.023.3 disclosure, I seem to glean from your conversation that in addition to identifying themselves as a paid lobbyist on the public comment form, that you would also like them to indicate who they're representing. And in the current form, there would be a registration that you could cross-reference that public comment form, but in what it sounds like you're contemplating, that wouldn't be there. So, I just want to confirm with you that that was, in fact, what you were contemplating, and that you would want that amendment to that section.
That's a great catch. I'm looking to Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Clark. That's what my understanding is from the discussion.
That would be, again, an amendment to add that, that it would be the check mark, and then you would write down who you're representing. And if you're representing yourself, you would just leave that all blank.
Kayden Smatiavich for the record. Thank you for that clarification. Great. Commissioner Clark, do you have something?
Yes, I agree with that. If you declare you're intended to be a lobbyist or a proponent for somebody for pay or whatever, favors, whatever you're getting, you should also say who you're representing.
Okay. Thank you for that. If there's no other commissioners, and Vice Chair Herman signed in.
Wouldn't it be simpler to just add that to our list of requirements for speaking publicly?
And that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Yes. So, I think from the idea that Commissioner Clark brought up, that Commissioner Andriola reminded us of from our last discussion in August, he had suggested, put a check mark on the public comment card, and you write down who you're representing. You either disclose it yourself, or the clerk will disclose it on the record, and done and done. My understanding is, there's no appetite right now for a full registration, so it would just be a disclosure. And if the Board so chooses, registration could come later, but it may never, because this may be the way to ensure transparency during these public meetings. Okay. There's no other commissioners signed in. Public comment, Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Janet Butcher, followed by Penny Brock.
Welcome. Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments as they are said per the NRS code. Excuse me. I am not a lobbyist, and I speak as an individual and not representing any group. This is the biggest waste of time for staff and commissioners and this meeting, especially when we know that a certain commissioner may have been behind paid speakers being bused in or flown in to speak against an elections integrity item in 2022. So, now why would we want this ridiculous, nonsensical ordinance be implemented? Transparency is key, and I know that a lot of transparency doesn't happen. Like, why is the meeting at the end of the month being canceled? We just get canceled, but no transparency. I just think it's a big waste of time. We've already, the Chair has spoken and cut out our public comment at the beginning of the meeting because it takes too much time, but yet here we are wasting time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Roger Edwards.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments in the record per NRS. So, here we are again on this issue, wasting time, like Ms. Butcher said. So, we know that some on the commission are not happy that we, the people, come and speak. So, once you implement an ordinance or regulation, we don't know where it's going to go, because once it's in, very rarely can we get it reversed. So, therefore, will it be taken to the level where an individual exercising the First Amendment right, freedom of speech, will we be required to register as a lobbyist? How far will this go? If the ordinary person out there that does not come to the county commission that meeting that often hears they've got to register as a lobbyist, coming here is very intimidating in itself. Then if they hear that you've got to register as a lobbyist, that will put another barrier up. Now, yesterday at the meeting with, on the CARES campus issue, we heard about low barriers, high barriers. The county commission, for we, the people, individuals to come and speak, should have no barriers at all. And my concern is that if this is implemented to whatever degree, that this is putting up a barrier for we, the people, to come and exercise our First Amendment right, which includes freedom of speech and the right to redress our elected officials. Our elected officials should welcome individuals to come and speak to you. That's what it's all about. You were elected to represent we, the people. You were elected, you were hired by us, to listen to us. Why would you want to put barriers up to we, the people? Now, should someone that's hired to come and lobby you, you already know who those people are. Reno is a very small community. It's not hard to figure out who the paid lobbyists are, for the developers, or the realtors, or the nonprofit groups, or this group or that group. You all know who they are. They probably call you in your office. So, I would just ask that you put this aside and forget it was even discussed for so many meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Edwards, followed by Scott Meyer.
Good morning, commissioners. Roger Edwards for the record, and please be sure that my comments are not entered into the permanent record. You cannot do away with this ordinance. I have ordered 20 badges for my partners out here as public lobbyists. I want them all to wear them, so don't do away with the entire regulation quite yet. But like my former speaker mentioned, lobbyists by definitions don't come to general meetings and discuss, although they show up once in a while, but by definitions, they lobby you guys behind the scenes. So, why are we doing all this? I mean, you know, they advertise that I'm with ABC Development, and I need to talk to you about 100 Acres in Gerlach. They identify themselves, so that you know they're lobbyists when they come to you. Otherwise, they wouldn't have the credibility that they feel they need as lobbyists, as you well know. And so, you know, come on, we can just do away with the whole damn thing. But after I get my badges, please.
Scott Meyer?
Scott Meyer, for the record. Yeah, I agree with my friend Roger absolutely in what he said. And just because some of us know each other up here, back here, doesn't mean we're lobbyists. I think that you seem to think that, and it does not mean that. And my question is, what was the impetus to even start this? Was there an incident? Was there something that happened? I don't think there was. I never heard about anything, and I'm fairly plugged in. So, this was just out of the blue, just all of a sudden, "Oh, we need to have this new ordinance," which it kind of squelches free speech, if you think about it. I think it at least gives the impression that that's what you're trying to do, intimidate and squelch free speech. And it's, you know, it's fairly easy for you people to intimidate us back here, because it's intimidating anyhow. So, I think it's really kind of very, I don't know what the word is, but it's not very, a very nice thing to do. I guess that's all I have to say. I just think you should think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in?
Okay. And DA Edwards, can you remind us, so you think it's continuance with direction to staff, which I think we've given, is enough that we need to do today? We don't have to make a formal anything?
I think there should be a motion, if what you want to do is make, have the changes made and brought back, there should be a motion to continue the hearing. I'd pick a date, have it brought back on that date, and with the changes that were discussed today. I do think that Ms. Matiavich and I, in attempting to assist the Board with the drafting here, because we're just taking direction on this, I think a direction on that point about the criminal versus civil penalty part would be important.
Thank you for that. So, since this was something that I wanted to bring to the Board and thought it was important for transparency for the public, I will move to continue the hearing with all the changes discussed today. And the next meeting, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Manager, if there's enough room on the 19th to bring this back?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back next week on Tuesday, the 19th, for Board consideration. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that include direction on the civil/criminal part? Is it staying as is, or is it just going to civil, or what?
It's sounding like we, for .5, we would remove Item A, which would then just have it be a civil penalty at that point, parent count.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that clarification, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the 19th with the discussion today. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I'm looking at the screen, not sure. And the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. We'll have that meeting next week on Tuesday. And now, we need to, I'm so sorry to my Board, to the Board, we need to take a break until the public hearing for Item 17. We'll come back at 1:15. Thank you very Okay, it is 1:15. I will call the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order, and we will start with Item 18. Mr. Manager?
18 or 17, man?
Oh, 17. Excuse me. Thank you.
Item 17 in the public hearing is an appeal of the Washoe County Board of Adjustment inability to approve Amendment of Conditions Case Number WAC 23-0607 for variance Case Number WPVAR, excuse me.
Get those glasses.
Too many digits. WPVAR 19-0001, which is Greenview Home Runners Association Garages. The Amendment of Condition-
The Amendment of Conditions is a request to extend for one year the requirement that the building permit shall be issued on or before June 4th, 2024 for a single car garage and one two-guard garage in the common area. The applicant and property owner is Greenview HOA. The address is 692 Palmer Court in Incline Village, and the assessor's parcel number is 128-310-05. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record and testimony and material submitted at the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Board of Adjustment. Virtual public comment is eligible for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation, please.
Planning and building? Okay. So as the manager explained, this is an appeal for an existing permit, which was WPVAR19001 that was approved. And they're asking for a one-year extension. The property is located up in Incline. You can sort of see, it's off of Mount Rose Highway. And then on the left side is sort of a close-up of the property. And here is where they're proposing to put the garage. You can see on the right, there's a layout of the four units with the two garages. There's one on the right side, it's just a one-car garage. And the one then on the left side is a two-car garage. As stated, they are asking for an extension, a one-year extension. They needed the extension to obtain the building permits. There are two current building permits in the process, WBLD2203854 and 55. Both of them are almost completed, but not close enough, so the HOA had to apply for the extension, because otherwise, the building permit would expire on June 4th of this year. They had already previously asked for an extension and were granted one after the original variance was approved, which extended the variant, the application, the timeframe to June 4th of 2023. So there is already an extension that was granted previously. And that was granted by the Board of Adjustment on August 5th, 2021. So what they're asking is just this simple condition to be changed, where it said within two years from the approved approval of the Washoe County to a specific date, which we're saying June 4th. However, because of the time changes, this has been extended a little bit. The applicant is asking for it to be changed to December 4th. However, it was submitted to the Board of Adjustment as of June 4th. So I just want to present that to you, that you can, the applicant is asking for an additional six months, so the date would be December 4th. And I provide possible motions in the staff report. The applicant is here also. If you have further questions for them, or I'm available for any questions.
And Ms. Olander, could you just brief the board on why this was appealed?
So it wasn't really appealed in the typical way. It was, we had two for and two against the decision. So it was impasse. So at that point, we had to bring it forward if the applicant wanted to proceed. The only way is to come forward to you and see if you would approve it or not.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that. And with that, we will allow the appellant's 10 minutes to come up and speak and to their case. And then obviously, there's not another side of this because the BOA was at an impasse. So then we'll have a discussion as a board and do public comment. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is John Hash. I'm one of the owners of Greenview. The other owners are in the back, except for Unit 3. Ms. Fung could not make it. And the owner actually passed away last October, and his daughter is still finishing school. So she couldn't get away to make it. We, I have lived at this unit for 13 years. I'm supposed to put this down, face down. I want to show you this.
Oh, no, flip it around. There we go.
I hope you can see that.
Okay, yes.
That's right outside my front door. That is the lot that there seems to be a lot of controversy on about whether or not we can protect that lot. That lot's very dear to us, the conservancy lot. We have, we've known the foresters who come up. It is a wildlife lot that goes right to the street, and off they go up and above 431. But there is no way that we would ever do anything in building this that would impact that lot. We actually have a rabbit who lives on that lot. What he does in the winter, we do not know. But he comes back every year to that lot. The lot, I can guarantee you, will not be affected. I want to show you one other picture. If you'll just bear with me, if I've got my 10 minutes right here. This is a picture, it's really hard to see, I guess, but it's basically what we use to surround the entire work site. The work site, with the permit that we received from the TRPA, allowed us to excavate, allowed us to put up the temporary BMPs, and allowed us to store on the driveway the dirt that was, that we removed. They tell you how much dirt you can move, when you can move it, and where you have to put it to store it. It took two and a half, almost three years for TRPA to issue our permit. Some of it was COVID. The year that COVID was with us, we got nothing done. We got nothing back from the TRPA. We even hired a consultant, and we spent $18,000 on the consultant. And good, bad, or indifferent, it took a long time. Our permit has been in the building department for a little over a year, about 15, 16 months now. But I have to tell you that Kelly Mullen has done an exceptionally good job of getting involved in a single permit issue, a single building issue that normally the Director of Planning and Building would not, would not do. But she personally got involved, and we really appreciate that, and I want to thank her for that. And this lady, back in the days when, was it Kraus? Mrs. Kraus?
Eva Kraus.
Eva Kraus. I don't know if any of you knew her or not, was in planning a long time. She's the one that got us started on this in 2018. So we've been at it a while, and I realize we've gotten extensions. I'm not a contractor. I'm not a builder. I'm just an owner. And at the time that we started this, I was the only owner who lived at Greenview full-time. I loved to ski. I loved the winter. I love the snow. I don't even mind shoveling snow. But it's gotten to a point now where our winters are getting really, really tough, and the snow's getting worse. And I'm getting older, and it's getting harder. So I really would appreciate, we've written all of you all. I know, I hope it didn't bother you, but to tell you how we feel about this place. It's ours. We even feel like that lot is ours. We clean it. Back in 2014, 2015, Jeff Haas was the forester from the conservancy. He would come up. We met with him. The lot is actually a snow dump lot that Washoe County leases from the conservancy for all of the snow that comes from the cul-de-sac of Palmer and of Wilson Way. They store it there. It's not the best thing in the world because our lot backs up to Third Creek. And Third Creek, as you know, runs into our Lake Tahoe. So it's not the greatest way, but it's one of the best ways that we have to clear the roads. There's not much else we can do up there. So we take care of the lot. We're the ones that every May and every September, you know, we rake, we pick up the plastic, we pick up the pine needles and try and make it less friendly to wildfires. But I was really kind of disappointed in the letter I got from Planning, from our Director of State Lands, because he just assumes that we're going to do some of the same things that has happened to his conservancy lots in other parts. And that has never even entered our mind that we would try and do anything to impact that lot in a negative way. Just hasn't. As I said, I'm not a contractor. I'm an ex-military guy, 28 years. So we ask for your help. It's all we can do for that year. Thank you.
Thank you. While you still have three minutes, Mr. Hash, could you just address the request from June 4th, 2024 extension to the December 4th, 2024 extension request?
Well, we only have one more month. October 15th, we can't do anything anymore. TRPA will not let you. You can't move a shovel of dirt. You cannot move the snow. TRP has a prohibition against any dirt movement or digging or anything like that from October 15th until May 1st. If we have another year of snow like we had this year, it went almost till June 1st. But that's the, we have a very small building window in a TRPA permitted area. It's not just us. It's anything around the lake. It's not just Incline. But that was why we only have 30 days. We don't have our permit yet from Washoe County. We have the, what we thought was a tough one from TRPA, but it didn't work out that way. But we only have one item really left, and it's with Nevada Energy. We're working with Shaw Engineering here in Reno, whose specialty is utilities. And they are some of the nicest people in the world to work with. And they have been over backwards trying to get this approved for us. But it's taken six months for Nevada Energy to even reply to them. So we've got one electric cable that has to be moved. And that's where we are. And that's why we're asking for that additional time period of six months.
Because also, you had to appeal to the Board of County Commissioners?
Right. We had to appeal to the BOA. And, you know, we did the appeal, and then you got to wait till the BOA meets, if you don't meet that sort of thing. So that took two months of our time. Then they decided not to do anything about it. And so then we said, well, we've got to come to you guys again. And that's taken another month. So we've lost three months of just trying to get, get this thing rolling a little bit.
Okay.
Any other?
We will, I mean, I just wanted you to address that issue. You have, your time's almost up, so we'll see if there's any board questions, and we'll ask you up when we have, we're at that point. Thank you.
And I also want to thank this lady. She's been awesome for us.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Mr. DA Edwards, can you just clarify to the board what we're doing today? I read over and over in the BOA staff report and the minutes that we're not looking at the original variance, correct?
That's correct. You're only looking at the decision on the extension for the time, as I understand it, for the time to issue the building permit,
Exactly.
which is June 4th of next year. And I don't know, and it may be worth hearing from Planning on, you know, whether that is still something that's feasible without the extension. Because I know they can't build during the off-season at the lake, but they may still be able to get their building permit in time. I don't know. That's something that Planning could speak to potentially on the record.
Yes, come on up.
Julie Olander, for the record. So as Mr. Edwards explained, yes, they, I just want to make sure that's understood. They don't have to complete the garages. They don't have to be all built. They just have to obtain the building permit. I do think it's reasonable that the HOA can obtain that in the next month, probably. And even though they can't start doing anything on the ground, they could come back in, hopefully in May or April, May or June, and then start building. So they just have to obtain the building permit. They don't have to get the building finalled or see a vote or anything like that. They just have to be able to get a permit from us that's issued. And I do think that would probably be done as long as NV Energy reviews the easement, and they get, we get the proper documentation from them. That probably all happen the next few months. But I suggested the eight-month, 18-month extension instead of the 12-month, just to give the HOA a little bit of breathing room.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's helpful. So I'm going to open it up to the board for questions or comments. I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
My, thank you, Madam Chair. So based on what you said and what Mr. Edwards said, that we're basically just here to only discuss whether we allow them the extra time, just an extension. That's all we're here to talk about. As far as I'm concerned, it's a no-brainer. Let's give them some extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Garcia?
Just a point of clarification. Ms. Olander, is that how you say your last name? Olander?
Julie Olander, just Olander, no R.
Okay. Olander. I probably messed it up again.
That's okay.
So the only pending item is, in fact, the NV Energy.
That's my understanding. So both Building has signed off on the building permit. So the building permit gets routed to different departments. And so Building has signed off on the permit. So they have no issues with it. Engineering is waiting for that utility easement notification. And then Planning has not signed off on it. And I won't sign off on the building permit until this, the extension gets clarified.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Any other board questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. Then let's open it up to public comment. Madam Clerk?
We have Yolanda Knack in Incline Village. Go ahead.
Yes. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Yolanda Knack, Incline Village resident. A couple of things. The first thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, it's hard to figure out what time each of the items. So in order to make a comment on a specific item, you almost have to sit for the whole meeting. And so I, first, I want to say thank you for letting us make comments here at the Incline Village Library. Appreciate that. But it would be better for us to be able to make comments in the beginning of the meeting. That way, we don't have to try to get here at a particular time, which we don't, we don't know what time each of the items is going to be talked about. So it's better to be able to come at the beginning of the meeting. That way, you get our input on your items that you're discussing instead of afterwards, because afterwards, you may have already made a decision that, you know, we may not appreciate. The second thing I want to mention is our building businesses here in town. Unfortunately, you know, you made a vote on changing the zoning. Well, essentially, you voted on 947 Tahoe Boulevard in January.
Ms. Knack, is this having to do with item 17? The appeal of the BOA variance?
No.
Okay. We do have general public comment, and it will be following this item. And we are happy to... And we are happy to have you join us then for that.
So what time will that be?
This item is, after this item is voted on.
Okay.
And then we'll call you back up. Thank you. Any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
I just have an email that was received and distributed to the board to place on the record.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other board comments? I'm not seeing any. So this is in my district, and as much as, you know, we understand the concern of the Nevada Division of State Lands, I'm with Commissioner Clark and would like to approve the amendment of conditions, case number WAC 23-0007 for variance, case number WPVAR19-0001, Greenview HOA garages. And I'm looking for a, wait, did I do that correctly? I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong, I'm reading the wrong approval. So move to approve the amendment of conditions, case number WAC 23-0007 for variance, number case WPVAR19-0001, Greenview HOA garages. The approval is based on the ability to make the findings required by WCC Section 110.804.25 plus allowing them an extension till December 4th, 2024. Looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion, DA Edwards?
Yes. One thing that I think we've dealt with a couple of times recently on planning items is, in, in addition to stating or reciting that you can make the findings, perhaps actually articulating a couple of specifics. So I think you are not required to do that, but I think if you wanted to recite a couple of specifics of why you think it's a good idea to grant this extension, I think that helps the record. So it's up to you, but I'd make that recommendation.
All right. Let me pull up the findings.
I would even say you could just articulate on, in terms of rationality, why you think this is or isn't a good extension to grant. So building season, delays and other permitting agencies, all those kinds of things, I think, would, would be fair game.
Okay. Due to delays and restrictions of building in the Tahoe area, that is why I think that we should move forward with this extension. With that change or addition to the motion, any, does the second or agree? Thank you. Any questions on the motion by the board? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right. Thank you very much. Now we will move to Item 19, public comment.
Item, Item 19 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may be, may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Madam Clerk, can we go back to Incline Village to Ms. Knack?
We can. We will call her first.
Yeah, Yolanda Knack, Incline Village resident. First, I just want to thank you again for letting us speak at the library here. Saves us, you know, probably more than an hour of travel to get to you. I wanted to go over with you a few things about the 947 Tahoe Boulevard project. When it first, the meet, the first meetings, I went to a couple of them, and they said nothing about changing the zoning for our businesses here in town. And so it wasn't until recent that I discovered that they actually had rezoned all of Area 1. And one thing you don't understand is, because you live in Reno or Sparks or wherever you live, you don't live here, you don't understand that our businesses can't just go to another part of town and reopen their doors. The other thing I don't think you understand is it's over 56 businesses that this is going to, or could affect. You know, basically, you're putting these businesses at risk, losing their lease and, you know, not, you know, basically closing their doors. If they close their doors, they're not going to be able to cut, you know, reopen them in a, in a local area. So you need to understand exactly what you're doing by this. The other thing, I know it's multi-use for 947 Tahoe, but keep in mind that the business is put in the parking garage, you know, like underground with the cars. So that's really not optimal for a business. Plus, they may not be able to afford the space is, is another issue. So please consider helping us so we do not lose our businesses, because at this rate, we, we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now back into chambers, we, our first speaker is Alfred Nepper, followed by Katie Nepper. Sure.
Hi, I'm Katie Nepper. We're here today to give some background on WSUP 220019, Safe Embrace's appeal wishing to expand to a group care facility, which is scheduled for the 10/24 meeting. We have been contesting this use for five years. As background, Safe Embrace has been operating a group home for victims of domestic violence since 2001. It is important to note that a group home is legal in any residential neighborhood in the county. In 2017, Safe Embrace applied for a four-bedroom expansion, which was ultimately approved in 2018 without a required public hearing. They specifically stated the existing and proposed uses were for a group home. In 2017, the property was in the Sparks SOI. As soon as we saw the construction taking place, we protested to Safe Embrace in the city of Sparks. We were told many things that simply were not true by Sparks and also Washoe County, the most significant of which was they were going to remain a group home. This did not happen, and when we found out they had approval for a group care facility in 2019, we filed a lawsuit, which we ultimately won. Sparks admitted in court they were in error, and Sparks should have had to deny the request had they followed code, as a group care facility for victims of domestic violence is not allowed in any residential neighborhood in Sparks. On August 3rd, the Board of Adjustment did not approve the SUP, so Safe Embrace has appealed. There are so many reasons for denial, including false statements and include, and continuing errors from both Safe Embrace and the county, that we need to present our facts, which are verifiable in multiple meetings. No matter how much sympathy an entity has, the rules are the rules, and we trust this board to follow them. It's important to note that a denial of this permit does not shut down Safe Embrace. They have been operating for, for a year now as a group home, the same as they had since 2001. As Safe Embrace's former lawyer stated in court, he did not care how it ended up, since they would just sue the city if they could not operate as a group care facility in the current location. This is the only solution that is equitable, since Sparks caused this whole fiasco. It's also important to note that every property owner who lives on Ponderosa, without exception, is against putting a commercial facility in the middle of our subdivision. The neighbors have submitted many pages of documentation, which from some of the comments from the Board of Adjustment members, not everyone read. We were dismayed to hear the chair say he didn't believe everything he heard, even though he had proof, while apparently believing everything Planning said, even though much of it was based on incorrect information supplied by Christie Corporation and Safe Embrace. We tried to use 311 to resolve some of those issues, but did not receive a response. 311 merely forwards complaints to other departments, marking them closed. We would like to start with Safe Embrace's application for the SUP. The following are false, false statements or material omissions.
Alfred Nepper?
Katie speaking on my behalf.
Okay.
The combination.
Okay. Okay.
She's reading my statement, I should say.
Okay. Thank you.
Nowhere in the application to Safe Embrace mentioned the property is situated in PJ Kelly subdivision, which eat, which each lot govern, with each lot governed by deed restrictions. Safe Embrace marked on the application there were no deed restrictions that applied. We are currently in litigation over this, so they are well aware that isn't true. Nowhere in the application to Safe Embrace mentioned Sparks' approvals of the building permit for the new expansion were revoked by Washoe County District Court on 6/20/22. A new building permit cannot be approved because in LDS, only one dwelling unit is allowed per one acre lot, and their lot is on one acre. The site does not have 4,100 square feet of permitted living space, as the application states. Conversions mentioned in 2006 and '07 did not make the attached and detached garages into living spaces. There are no building permits in county records supporting this. Their application states there is a pet shelter that can house three dogs and six cats, small animals. This is incorrect. They have crates for four dogs and eight cats, which when full would be over the allowable limit. The most egregious falsification is the statement in the application, the care facility has been in existence for 20 years. It goes on to say, quote, "The site was previously approved and operated under the city of Sparks before it was determined that the permitting should have been completed under Washoe County. This permit is to correct that inadvertent oversight," unquote. Nothing in that statement is correct. The only thing wrong with the permitting was that Sparks didn't follow their code, which would have required denial. There was no inadvertent oversight to be corrected. Yet Planning took Safe Embrace at their word, that they had been operating this way for over 20 years, and used this as a reason to recommend approval on each finding in the SUP. Even when we met with Planning right before the Board of Adjustment meeting, we still had to supply proof in the form of their own county records to show Safe Embrace was a group home, when they first took over the property in 2001 and continued as a group home until 2019, when they were illegally granted group care facility status. Under the administrative authority, County Code 125.140 provides, "It is unlawful for a person to knowingly make or submit a false statement, document, or material omission in connection with an application or procedure required by this chapter. Based on this alone, the SUP must be denied. The miss, this misdemeanor has not been addressed despite our 311 filing. County records and documentations we have submitted in opposition to this SUP support everything we have stated." We would like to request public comment be heard at the beginning of each meeting, as this is not only a hardship for us, but allows us only three minutes on an agenda item. In the past, we had the three minutes at the beginning of the meeting, as well as the three minutes during the agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Janet Butcher.
Hello, it's me, Terry Brooks again. And today I'd like to address children and education when it comes to homelessness. Eventually, I'll try to do my best to learn how to connect all these dots. And when I learn what ties all these problems together, maybe I'll learn how to untie those knots. When children are homeless and still go to school, they are not considered to be any exception to any rule. And when they're experiencing hunger and maybe on the edge of starvation, it becomes very difficult for them to receive a proper education. And if these children have become physically ill, it's hard for them to properly learn when lacking such needed skill. And if they are suffering from mental illness too, the process of learning is even harder to do. And if they're at a distance from their school, the source of their education, they might have a problem getting there due to lack of transportation. It can be hard to do homework if you don't even have a home. I don't think I'd even be able to write this poem. If children are going through depression and at school lack interaction, then they are less likely to learn to their teacher's satisfaction. And homeless children tend to have an attendance that is low, which means that the less they are taught, the less they'll learn to know. And the less they learn or know, the lower will be their self-esteem, which will lead to a lower chance of achieving any dream. And when they find themselves lacking fundamental knowledge, the less chance they'll ever have getting into college. And then the less they achieve in receiving education, the less likely they will be to enter an occupation. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I'll look forward to coming back when I got a lot more to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, for the record, I am not a paid lobbyist, and I speak as an individual and not representing any group. Please enter my comments as they are sent per the NRS code. Just a reminder, Haven Heard It said, Constitution Day is Sunday, September 17th. On July 11th, 2023, Chair Hill responded to Vice Chair Herman's comments regarding the election integrity resolution. She noted, "The resolution was being reviewed by the District Attorney's Office, which would provide the board with information about whether the elements in the resolution were legal." It's now a month later. Why the slow walk? On numerous occasions, Commissioner Clark and Herman have requested that the public comment at the beginning of the meeting be returned to its rightful place on the agenda. The removal of the agenda item has a negative impact on the constituents in the county, not just Chairman Hill's District 1, but that of constituents in the whole of the county. I believe it is important for all the other commissioners to speak up and request it be placed back on the agenda. Why isn't Commissioner Andriola or Garcia making a request to have it put back on the meeting agenda? Also having been ignored is the request by the, by Commissioner Clark and Herman to at least have a vote among the commission as a whole, to have it placed back on the agenda, after Chair Hill's unilateral decision to remove it because she felt it was impeding on her having a short commission meeting. In other words, she doesn't care to hear from her constituents or public. Rumor has it that the two trustee positions for the library board will be on the agenda at the September 19th County, Washoe County meeting, and that there are about 50 applicants. Is there a scorecard that is used in which the applicants are evaluated? Commissioner Clark had suggested back when the last trustee was appointed, that there be a separate special meeting where the applicants can answer questions or present their desire and qualifications, so the whole of the county can see the individuals that obtained the selection. Either of these two ideas should be considered for transparency. I love that word transparency. It's not used in all cases. Please note that balance is needed on the library trustee board. It is not present with the current board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Martinez, followed by Deborah Sock.
Got the overhead. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. District Attorney, Madam Clerk. For the record, Cindy Martinez. This morning, I watched the hearing for Item 18, for the proposed registration of lobbyists that also included civil and criminal penalties for violations of failing to register. And as I watched, I became even more concerned about the intent of this ordinance. If I recall correctly, its first reading included justification to bring county into alignment with local governments and similar codes. And originally, I was agnostic about it, but, because it didn't apply to me. On reflection, I perceive this ordinance is drafted specifically to squelch the First Amendment activities of Washoe citizens and purposely target an active group of citizens with whom I used to work in grassroots organizing. While I may disagree with their many tactics and sometimes abrasive language utilized in addressing this body, I can only empathize with their fury born of legitimate fears of loss of freedom and liberty. Yesterday's community, yesterday's community homeless advisory board yielded a soundbite that I think is worthy of paraphrasing here. It is not our job to make you feel comfortable with our legitimate First Amendment-protected activities. It is your job, however, to listen to the cries of the citizenry and redress their grievances, not find ways to shut them up and make them go away. I remind the five seated commissioners here of your recorded sworn oaths of office, copies of which I present here. While the business of Washoe County- While the business of Washoe County is supposed to be largely nonpartisan and beneficial to its citizens as a whole, the last three years have been an increasing trend of enlarging government and unsustainably bloating budgets, as I warned would happen in the summer of 2021 after Washoe's receipt of CARES Act and ARPA funds. Your duty as elected representatives is to weigh your decisions not only on what benefits Washoe's citizenry, but more importantly, to weigh your votes in accordance with your oaths to the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Item 18 is a solution in search of a problem. I do not support its intent, its scope, and most importantly, its proposed penalties. Steve Cecil Act destroyed the Bill of Rights under the guise of COVID-19 health restrictions. This past legislative session, SB 133, sought to criminalize objecting to election results. New Mexico Governor Michelle Lujan-Gresham issued an unconstitutional order infringing the Second Amendment, and Item 18 would criminalize failure to register as a lobbyist. The constitutional writing is on the wall, and I ask the three conservative Commissioners to vote against this ordinance next week, and also I request that public comment be returned to the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Sock, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Ms. Martinez, I think you have some documents. Oh, Eric's getting them.
Deborah Sock, for the record. I have a couple of questions and a couple of what I think will be Scribner's corrections, or at least clarifications, on Item 6D3, I believe. It says, where did it go? Too much paperwork. Never mind. On Item 9, it says, fees and costs are deducted in terms of the TIVA-Walgreens settlement, and will be paid in equal installments and will be paid in varying installments. Which is it, one or the other? And I know that you can't answer that question to me, I'm just presenting it for you to think about. The other thing is Item 13. The cost proposal overview is misconstrued, I'll put it that way. The one-time costs in tiny print underneath says, "In thousands." Professional services, including expenses, implementation, and conversion. 1,000. That's 1,000 times 1,000. That's $1 million you're talking about spending to convert one system into another recording system for corp portability. That doesn't include the $550,000 you're talking about spending for conversion or interfaces. The $40,000 you're talking about to spend licenses, maintenance, and upgrades of support. I know you've gotten some grants for some of this, but that's an awful lot of our taxpayer money to spend without going out to open bid. Please, in future, make sure that all items are opened up for open bid by various companies, and that that information is presented to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Victoria Meyer, followed by Samantha Constantino Gonzalez.
And I have documents to distribute to the board from Ms. Myers.
Good afternoon, I think it's afternoon. Nice to see you all today. Victoria Meyer, for the record. I am not a lobbyist. I'm not paid to be here. I'm representing myself, and am never paid to be here. So anytime you've ever seen me, I'm not being paid. Okay. I'm here to just talk about the upcoming potential agenda item on September 19th for the Library Board, the two vacancies that you guys will be voting on to fill. I understand you have quite a few applicants, despite an article out there and an interview stating that, and people stating from the Commission Board here, that people are afraid to apply. I think you guys have over 50 applicants. I might be wrong, but somewhere around there. First, I want to address, the ALA, the American Library Association, defines young adult as between 12 and 18 years old. We have in our public libraries, here in Washoe County, one, there's quite a few, but one book in particular I'm going to address today, Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. This book discusses eating the P-word, boners, all kinds of, I have a whole list here of items that are pretty pornographic in this book. It's in the 12- to 18-year-old section of our public library. It's only one of many. This book also is in, oh, 2468, 10, 12, 14, 16 of our public schools, five middle schools. We have a growing contingent of people who are very, very concerned and getting very vocal about this issue. And the two seats that are coming up are incredibly important to place people who will turn this around. We want a balance on this Library Board. We want these applicants interviewed and vetted. We have three that I've passed out to you, that a large contingent of people, a growing contingent of people, are in support of. There's two more, Susan Steeg, who was actually herself a librarian, and Robbie Mouse. So I would encourage you all, I put their, I gave you three of these applicants, you have their phone numbers, and a little short bio on each of them, and I just gave you the other two names. These are the people, these are the candidates that we want you to vet for these two vacancies, because there's a lot of blue out there. We want to see a little red on this library chair. Jeff Scott had a police report filed against him. Thank you.
Samantha Constantino Gonzalez.
Hello, everyone. The first thing I want to say is I really want to thank all of you for really stepping up to be public servants, because I can see sometimes it's not always easy, and whether you're a Democrat, Republican, or Independent, I really commend you all for doing that. So I'm Samantha Constantino Gonzalez, a lifetime resident of Washoe County. I'm also a retired employee from the Department of Human Services, specifically Child and Family Services for the state of Nevada. And I wanted to bring to your attention that domestic violence shelters in Washoe County are not licensed. It's a sort of a unique situation in that the Washoe County licenses foster and group homes for children, and the state licenses adult group homes for adults with physical and/or mental disabilities. But domestic violence shelters have, except men, women, and children, and they are not currently licensed as group homes, and so why does it matter? A license would require that all health and safety requirements are met, it would require that there's policies that have to be met, but it also would help resolve some issues. Some of those issues that we hope it would resolve would be such things as the number of occupants exceeds the allowed amount, there's dogs left outside barking for 30, 60 days, day and night on end, there's residents fighting in the backyard at 1:00 a.m., we even heard like a man and a woman fighting. There's approximately two or three-year-old little girl who wandered an acre away to another house at 7:00 in the morning, nobody was looking for her. There's no staff there at night, which was very surprising to us, because that seems when all the issues arise. A dead tree fell on a neighbor's yard. We want to ensure that residents don't have weapons, we want to ensure that these kids are safe. There's a lot of kids there, and they're living with unrelated adults, and they're sharing common areas. And we feel if they were licensed, as they should be, then it just is a safety requirement. We feel that domestic violence shelters are absolutely necessary, and, but we also think they shouldn't be operating without a license. Both Washoe County and the state give them a tremendous amount of money, and you need to have some eye on what's going on. The people in the facility deserve those protections, and so do the neighbors. And we hope by licensing them that it will help us have some sort of a process for resolving some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in in chambers, but I do have an email to place on the record.
Thank you very much. We will now move to Item 20.
Item 20 is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
Thank you very much. I am looking for Commissioners, Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that, you know, time just continues to tick, but it was either my first or second meeting that I put on the record the need to have a process in place for all applications, for all appointments, not just singling out one particular category. And so since then, I have been, at least, I've spoke with the County Manager, and I've spoke with staff, and the idea is to put something together for all the Commissioners to look at and discuss. So it is, to me, important to have a process that's consistent, that is transparent, which is why I brought it up right when I, you know, had the pleasure of serving in this capacity. So I just wanted to put that on the record. That is in process. I have my own process, because I feel that everything should be consistent, and calling the 59 applicants, in this case for the library appointments, and the other is just a commitment I've made in terms of using best practices with HR and ensuring that every conversation is, every person is asked the same questions. It's much to the process that I have experienced with HR in that regard. So I'm not suggesting that's the process that needs to be implemented by anyone, I'm just saying that for me, it's important to have a process that's consistent. And I just hope that we can get to that point when the time is right for all the Commissioners to weigh in and offer their suggestions and look at having a process that can be transparent so that the public has an opportunity to understand what is being done as we look at those appointments. So.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I hate to do this to you, but I'm going to request again that we return to the first public comment. And the other item is, I would like to have us look into the need for this fence here between the public and us. I don't, I know it was caused by somebody threatening to drink green gel, but I just think that it's just a barrier between us and the people that come here, and it's kind of cold. And I just think that, and we take bands of people and bring them in here to take pictures. So, you know, it used to be so nice when everybody could come up and say, hi, hi, Jean, you know, and what are, you know, what are you thinking about this, or what are you thinking about that? And do people miss that? And I miss it too. So just the thought on that. And then the other thing is, I keep getting people calling, and I know people call and complain about things, but I had the same problem with DMV being so slow and hard to get a license through. And should we maybe write a letter to them as, you know, that our county needs better service from DMV? Just a thought. So, just, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike Clark, District 2. I'm paid to be here, and I'm a lobbyist for the people of Washoe County, and apparently I'm not very good at it. I've lobbied for the last several months to get public comment back on, early public comment. We heard from Incline Village that they're not happy with it. That's the chair's district. We heard from people from Sparks are not happy. We heard from people here in the audience, we hear from other Commissioners. We just can't seem to get this on. You know, this target could go away if somebody moves the target. I'm going to keep shooting at the target. I'm asking for this to be on the agenda to vote on. If somebody thinks this is a great idea, and the original idea was to shorten the meetings, make them more business-like, make them move faster, and we find out that actually it's caused the meetings to go 40, 50% longer, apparently that idea isn't working. When an idea isn't working, it might be time to revisit why that was done. I don't see that happening. I think Commissioner Herman, Chair, Vice Chair Herman has stated her position, I'm stating mine. I'm asking through the chair to Commissioner Andriola if she'll ask for a vote on this. If we have a vote on it, and it goes the way that the chair likes it to go, that'll be the end of the discussion. But we can't even get a vote on this, and that's my beef. You know, we, I don't expect, I'm an American, I don't expect to win every time, but I expect to be treated with some dignity, and I expect the people to be treated with some dignity. And if it's such a great idea, have a vote on it. Put it out there, let everybody see what everybody wants to vote on it, instead of unilaterally somebody putting this out there and calling it the way it is. You know, the President of the United States doesn't have this kind of power. Putin maybe has this type of power, but the idea of one person telling half a million people they can't show up and talk, an early comment, is absolutely un-American. I don't know why there isn't more people raising hell about this. I've been talking about it each and every time, and I'm not going to stop, because I don't quit. I'm going to keep bringing this up until we have a vote on it. Vote on it, and then we'll decide. Let's have public comment, and let's have the public comments come in on that, and see what the public comment is. I've hardly, I haven't heard anybody that came up here and said, this is a great idea, I'm glad we got rid of this. You know, this county's been here for 162 years, and this is the first time in 162 years, to my knowledge, that we don't allow public comment at the start of the meeting. And even if I'm wrong about that, what if they did back in 1902 or something? It wasn't right if they did it before, and it isn't right if we're doing it now. I want to see this public have the opportunity to share with us what their thoughts are. We don't have to like what they're saying, we might not even agree with it, or we may learn something. So I'm asking that we have a vote on it. I'm asking the other Commissioners that are sitting up here today to at least acknowledge the fact that we should have a vote on it, or we shouldn't. And that answer, or lack thereof, is the answer we're looking for. So it's a swing vote situation, as far as I could see it, and it's one person can make the difference on this. So I ask for this to come up for a vote. I also had a meeting with a couple of the Assistant DA's and the Chair, and she offered up the fact that, and I told her that I was unhappy that I supported her as being the Chair, and I would like to have that, if I had that vote to do over again, I wouldn't vote for her, based on this and this alone. She then said at that meeting that she'd bring that up. She then said at that meeting that she'd bring that up and have an agenda item, and we'd have the vote again. Well, come to find out, there's some rules that won't allow that. So if she was genuine with her thoughts of, "Let's have a vote on that," let's cut to the chase. The chase is, "Let's have a vote on public comment." If not, if she offered up that she wanted to allow to be voted on her selection as chair again, then help me navigate that process so we could have that vote. Otherwise, that was a disingenuous offer, and I find that troubling. Okay, I'll shift gears a little bit. Tomorrow, at the senior center, I'm having lunch with the seniors. I rotate through all the different senior centers in the county, having lunch with the seniors. I hope that if you're a senior, you'd come out and have lunch with us, give this food the taste test. For as far as I'm concerned, it's thumbs down. We should have a little bit better quality for our seniors. Next, every other Saturday, every other Sunday, excuse me, bicycle riding on the river with Commissioner Clark. We start out at Cottonwood Park. We ride in, turn around at the Hub Coffee Shop down by the river. It's a great ride, pretty comfortable, as the weather's changing, you know, probably be time for a sweatshirt or something, but we did this most of the summer, and it's going to continue until the snow falls. So I invite everybody to join me with that. And if, shifting back to where we were at the beginning, I'm asking Commissioner Andriola to give a comment whether she thinks we should vote on this or not.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Andriola.
Is it possible, is this the appropriate time, the agenda, to actually look at Samantha Constantino, the DCFS representative, a retired State of Nevada Division of Child and Family Services person, to actually look at what those requirements are for domestic shelters and the licensing? Is that appropriate at this time to look into that?
Commissioner, we always follow up with commenters who make requests, so we will follow up.
I really appreciate it. And even though I'm using DCFS, it's HSA as well. It's, that's what I heard, in terms of calling for consideration for licensing of domestic shelters. So I just wanted to make sure I got that out there. Thank you for the follow-up.
Thank you. All right. With that, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned.